Six o'clock and so we can start with the administrative business. So we call the August 28th meeting of the Concord Select Board to order and recognize Ms. Ackerman for the first motion of the evening.
Okay, so Mary Hartman is clerk and she is not with us. So I move to nominate Mark Howell as the clerk pro town.
Second, you can vote for yourself.
Any further discussion?
Aye. Now, we do, since I think we're hybrid, we should take a, even if we're, not everybody is online, we should take a roll call vote.
Yeah, okay. Well, so I'll call a roll. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mr. Howell, aye, and we'll serve that as the, as the call to order too. As we have, Mary Hartman is previously noted as absent and as of right now, Linda Escobedo is not here yet either.
All right, so we can proceed with the review of the minutes.
Of public comments?
And actually, it's a consent calendar, is that correct?
So we got public comment?
Oh, thank you. I didn't have a tab for that, so. Do we have any public comments this evening?
No.
What's wrong with them? No comments?
They want us to be 15 minutes ahead of time right off the bat.
I guess you were right. We're ready for the consent agenda already.
Good.
Okay. Oh, we do have one public comment.
You seem so upset about the lack of public comments, Sue Felshen, 19 Sunnyside Lane. I think it would make your agendas more clear if you said general public comment, because just by saying public comment, it makes it look as if all public comment is restricted to this one period, as opposed to you sometimes take public comment elsewhere on specific agenda items.
That's a comment.
That's a comment. Yes.
Okay, look at that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, now that we've had a comment, we can move on to the consent agenda.
Hey, I'd like to move the approval of the consent agenda with thanks to the Community Chest, Concord Carlisle Youth Baseball, and Friends of the Concord Free Public Library for the gifts that are being received, accepted in as part of this agenda.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think.
Okay, I'll call a roll. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye, and thank you to all the donors, generous gifts.
And myself, Mr. Howell, aye. That's unanimous?
Okay. Now, we can move on to the committee nominations.
Committee nominations. Move to nominate Erwin Hitzman of 49 Seymour Street for a term to expire May 31st, 2026, to the PEG Access Advisory Committee, and Mariana Hill of 574 Harrington Avenue for a term to expire May 31st, 2026, to the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Second.
Well, those are just nominations, so.
Those are nominations.
They're just nominees.
Right.
So I'll save the second for the appointments.
Okay.
Okay.
And moving to appointments, we move to appoint Elizabeth Leonard of 23 McMillan Drive as an Associate Member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire May 31st, 2026, and move to appoint 93 voters as the election officers for terms to expire July 31st, 2024, as per the request of the Board of Registars and as included in the Select Board meeting packet for this, tonight's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one quick question. Are we, I remember in the previous meeting, Henry, you talked about how the ZBA is going to be doing some very important votes coming up?
Yes.
And we had some vacancies, I think two vacancies maybe?
There were, all of the regular positions, that is, the three full members are currently filled. One of those will expire at the aftertown meeting this year, so there will be a vacancy for one full member. There are also now, one of the associate, one of the, it is very likely that the associate member will come forward to be the nominee for the regular full position, at which time we will have five, no, we'll have four, because Ms. Leonard will be an associate. We'll have four vacancies for associate members. The associate memberships have not been filled for a long time.
We'll have four vacancies.
Well, Ms. Leonard will be one of the associates, and the associate member, I expect, will move up to be the, one of the fill this vacancy on the.
Okay, so we're recruiting for the zoning board of appeals. Anybody listening, let us know.
But I do want to congratulate Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
In her, her.
Her willingness to serve.
The associate membership. So, and we've appointed, that's just probably our record number of appointments in one vote, 93 members for the poll members, and I get, I think you get an idea of the political balance of the town in the balance of the party affiliations of the, of the poll workers.
And that's a hard job. They start early, early, early in the morning. They work long hours. So thank you to all the people serving as election officers.
Making democracy happen.
Yeah.
And all the people who are going to vote the wrong way have to be corrected. So that's a lot of work. All right.
If there's no further discussion, I'll call a roll for committee appointments. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mark Howell, aye.
Okay. So, the next item is the, the, the document, the presentation, the document with regard to the withdrawal from the Regional Emergency Communication Center, and we have a masked woman here tonight.
Yes.
Thank you and good evening. As, as you noted at your last meeting, the board took a vote to direct the town manager to withdraw from the Acton Concord Regional Dispatch District. Our town council, Anderson and Krieger, has a conflict because one of the partners at Anderson and Krieger also represents the town of Acton. We did think for a moment that perhaps this would be amicable and, and we could negotiate an exit without having to go for special counsel, but we did learn through our town council that the town of Acton intends to retain special counsel, so we wanted to, to do that as well, because ANK is not able to represent us in this case. The recommendation is to appoint Peter Durning of Burns and Levinson. He, in a previous, he, he was with Myers and, now I just forgot Myers.
But.
The, the firm.
Pickett? Myers? No.
She was previously in a firm which represented the town in the NAGOG.
In, in the NAGOG matter, so he is familiar with the town and with the town's relationship with Acton and interested in, in serving in this capacity. This would be a limited capacity because this is an intermunicipal agreement. There is a legal notice that is required. We, we need him to prepare that and submit that, and we hope that that will be the end of the need for special counsel. The, while it's not included in the packet, the estimated budget for this is just under $5,000, and you certainly could include that in your motion, and, and I could come back to you if there is, if there is a projection for expense to be above that, but I would hope not.
Thank you. We hope that just because there are lawyers involved, it still might remain amicable.
That would be our hope as well.
Is there any discussion of this motion?
No.
Is there any discussion from the, from the floor or from the, from Zoom on this motion before we take a vote on it? All right.
I move to appoint Burns and Levinson, Levinston LLP as special counsel under the terms of a letter of engagement dated August 18th, 2023.
And do you want to include not to exceed the 5,000 or, or not include that?
I'm okay without it.
Hmm?
I'm okay without it.
Oh, have the motion say that the estimated fees would be $5,000 for the, for the anticipated work on this?
I certainly can advise the board if, if there is a sense that it would go over that, but again, it would be my hope that, that we could stay within that budget.
Okay, that's fine.
There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? And Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mark Howell, aye. And motion passes?
Good. That's money well spent. So, the next item is the, two disclosures on conflict of interest disclosures. Now, there was a question as to whether or not we had already voted on one of those that somehow got onto today's agenda?
Right, but I figured it out that, I, I, I think Ms. Felshen is on Zoom and clarified this, but the, when I looked at the minutes that we just approved, we approved one disclose, one disclosure for Ms. Felshen, I think about the Warner's Pond, and this one is for Planning Board.
Ah, I see. All right, so is there any, we have advice from, we have advice from Town Council on this issue, and does she want to speak to it? Ms. Felshen?
Sue Felshen, 19 Sunnyside Lane, similar to, late to Ms. Flanagan of the Planning Board a few weeks ago, I am, have submitted a form regarding potential conflict of interest like her. This is under Section 19C. Since the state law, it was written in a way that is not at all clear about how to decide what, how to count what percentage of the population of the town is potentially conflicted or potentially covered by the NPTA communities law. I've decided to seek to submit a potential conflict of interest disclosure form in case it turned out to be less than 10%. And in, so this is basically the exact same manner, manner as with Ms. Flanagan.
Any further comment on this?
No.
Well, I think we have a, a letter from Town Council that there's, the financial interest is not so substantial as to affect, you know, the integrity of the service because it's affecting more than 10% of the town.
Right, and I think that we'd be happy to accept that recommendation and act on it if, if we were so advised. I had one question about the letter that we got from Anderson and Krieger, which is the, the very last sentence in the conclusion, which says, "One of the purposes of, one of the purposes was to avoid any appearance that the Select Board may be attempting to control the Planning Board in the exercise of his purview pursuant to General Law's Chapter 48 to propose zoning." I'm not sure I see that there's any, anything wrong with the Select Board exercising influence over desired changes to the zoning. In fact, I would say that that's part of our job. But in any event, that has nothing to do with the specific matter that's front of us.
Correct, whether we agree with that or not.
Right.
It's a moot point, yeah.
I've also, I would also submit, have you met our Planning Board?
Well.
I think that they would be impervious to such influence.
Well, but anyway, we, the Town Council thinks there should not be, be such an appearance, and as I say, just as, as the Speaker of the House, when they asked about whether he had influenced the rezoning, and he denied that he had, and he was then prosecuted for perjury, because he in fact did, when his answer to the question should have been, yes, that's my job.
No.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so that moves us on to the next conflict of interest.
So I think we should vote on that one.
I think we have to vote and we have to sign something, don't we?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so move that as appointing officials as required by General Law's Chapter 268A, Section 19A, "The Select Board has reviewed the particular matter and the financial interest identified above by Sue Felshen of the Planning Board. The Select Board has determined that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the employee."
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mark Howell, aye.
That is a vote, thank you. Then we have one other, one other conflict.
As a matter of fact, I think that we really have two others. So Ms. Shinneman is, has submitted two applications, one with respect to the Economic Vitality Committee and the other with the Concord to 2025 Executive Committee Communications and Publicity Subcommittee.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think, I think that's right. Maybe we should take them one at a time.
And she is here.
Would she, she is present. Would you like to come forward and be heard? We have a podium for you and everything. It's very, it's very high class.
Well, you need a microphone either way.
Hi.
Hi.
Jennifer Shinneman, 712 Monument Street. Yeah, so I just thought it would be good to get out ahead of any particular questions. I'm the Chair of the Economic Vitality Committee. There, I don't see any imminent potential for conflict of interest, but because in this capacity, I interact with so many individuals in the town, both in staff, government, other volunteers across the town. I am the co-founder and publisher of Discover Concord Magazine, which routinely profiles individuals in town, does stories on our history, et cetera. At this particular time, I don't see a imminent conflict of interest, but just thought I should put out there that I'm aware that I am both a publisher and also representative of economic vitality, so. Just thought it'd be better to get it on the record that I interact with lots and lots of people, which gives me information that, of course, I never publish anything confidential, but I am a publisher.
And the same is true for both?
Well, do you want to address these separately?
Yeah, I think we should do one at a time.
So have you seen the letter that we received from Town Council?
No, I have not. No one has sent that to me.
Well, I'm not sure I'm taking it one at a time, or I thought they were both the same, but the memorandum that we have from Town Council on, says that, "Given Ms. Shinneman's unique role as co-founder of Discover and Concord and presumably with a continuing financial interest in the same, only the first exemption is potentially available to her." That's because there are three exemptions in the statute. "Ms. Shinneman should seek an exemption to participate in matters before the EVC or Concord 250 involving Discover and Concord if the Select Board, as her appointing authority, determines that her interest is not so substantial to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the employee, that is, the employee. Given the information available at this point, it is not clear that such a conclusion would be justified," is what Town Council says. And I assume that's based on the fact that you are a part owner of Discover and Concord or Voyager Publications, which is the owner of the publication?
I am co-founder of Voyager Publishing. They own the magazine Discover Concord Magazine, yes.
So.
At this time, the only interaction that we have with the town is that the town takes out a quarter page ad five times a year.
So I think the real question in my mind is, do you have a financial interest as co-founder? Do you have a salary or equity in the company or any financial interest?
In the company?
Right, in either Voyager or Discover.
Yes, I own half of the company. I am the co-founder of the company. I do not draw a salary from the company, but it is a for-profit entity. I think the question is more, how does that impact the town?
Right, so I think what Town Council has bring to our attention here is potential conflicts. For example, you say the visitor center orders advertising.
Yes, they.
And also for, so that would be for the Economic Vitality, and then for the 250th, I think.
Can, can you explain?
Right, so if advertising, I guess the thought is, if, if the town is placing money in advertising with the magazine, and then you have a financial benefit or interest from the revenue from the magazine, so that's, so for Economic Vitality, I'm a little, you know, if.
The advertising revenue contributed by the town represents less than one-half of 1% of our revenue.
That was, thank you for that. That was what my, one of my questions was, and is it, is it the role of the Economic Vitality Committee to be any part of that procurement decision about the placing of the ads?
No.
Okay, so I'm pretty comfortable with the Economic Vitality Committee's side, side of this, because I, I'm convinced that the committee doesn't have any role, and, and the level of activity is, is basically de minimis.
Right, I agree. I agree. So, so maybe we should vote on that one.
Well, the key issue really is, does she play any role in making a decision of placing the advertising in the magazine? And the, and the answer is she does not play any role in making that decision. Now, if we grant a waiver with regard to these specific issues like placing advertising, the decision that might be made by town staff or by other town committees, that's not an issue, but such a waiver might not apply to other transactions that would have to come back to us if there were going to be different transactions other than the placing of advertising.
Right, so.
Which I assume is kind of a normal business transaction at a fixed, fixed card rate for the, for the space, the same as is charged to everybody else.
I also would just like to state for the record that, of course, out of my own sense of personal integrity, if a conversation were ever to come up in the committee, I would recuse myself from said discussion.
Right.
Okay.
But, not that I mean to minimize personal integrity, which of course is very important, but the conflict of interest law is, is a structure which really is designed to treat situations rather than the personal characteristics of the.
Well, and that's exactly why I'm proactively bringing this up and wanting it on the record, that I do see that it could be considered without the proper discussion and vote. So that's, that's exactly why I'm here.
And you're coming here to talk to us tonight is probably a good way to advertise your magazine to the public.
I think the public is well aware of Discover Concord Magazine, but thank you.
So, again, with respect to the Economic Vitality Committee, it seems to me that this is a, this would be similar to any other business owner or operator in town who was elected to participate in, in, in a similar committee that's oriented towards the economic activity, so.
So, all right, so that, we have taken care of that one. We're ready to vote on that?
Yeah, I think so. So, I mean, I'm sure that I. So as the appointing officials as required by General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 19, "The Select Board has reviewed the particular matter and the financial interest identified above of Jennifer," please pronounce.
It's like cinnamon with a sh- shinneman.
Cinnamon. Thank you. Of the Economic Vitality Committee, "The Select Board determined that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed to affect the integrity of the services which the municipal, municipality may expect from the employee."
All right.
Second.
Okay, so that's the first of the two disclosures, and I'll call for a vote unless there's any.
Is there any discussion on this from the public or from the committee?
Okay, and I note that Ms. Escobedo has joined us, thank.
So, oh yes, there she is. Hi, Linda.
Hello, everyone.
Okay. Did you have any questions or comments on the matter that we're voting?
I did not.
Okay, great. So I'll call a roll. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mark Howell, aye. Okay.
So I assume that there's some, that we have to sign. Do we have that in our package?
There's a matter of the Economic, or the Concord 225 Executive Committee Communications and Publicity Subcommittee, which Ms. Shinneman has submitted an application for as well.
So would you like me to speak to that one?
Please.
Okay, Jennifer Shinneman, 712 Monument Street. So in this particular instance, I was asked to serve on the Subcommittee for Communications and Publicity for the upcoming celebrations of the 250th anniversary of the beginning of the American Revolutionary War. This topic speaks very directly to a lot of the content that is already generated in Discover Concord Magazine, which routinely shares the stories of our town with visitors from around the world who come and spend time here, and with many more online who are not physically present here. One of the core missions of that Subcommittee is to proactively share the stories of our town with the world. So that is why Diane Proctor, the Chair of the Committee, asked me to join. I also have an extensive background in marketing and public relations, a lot of which will hopefully be of service to the town as the 250th approaches. The only time that what I see is maybe a potential conflict of interest in the sense that there could be a financial transaction occurred is when we started talking about the expected surge in the number of visitors coming to town. We've already seen that happening this year. Discover Concord has its, you know, sort of model of how it supports roughly between 8,500 and 10,000 copies of the magazine with each issue. It fluctuates according to the season. Winter's a little slower. We don't get as many visitors, for example. When we started drilling into the number of expected visitors in 2024, and especially in 2025, and these numbers are derived both from working with the town of Concord's Visitor Center, Beth Williams, and also the National Park Service, basing its estimations on similar profile activities such as, you know, the, the establishment of the National Park, anniversaries of Gettysburg, et cetera. The consensus across a broad spectrum was that we could expect approximately a 50% increase in annual visitorship the year of 2025. and as much as a twenty to twenty-five percent increase in 2024. We are already seeing that start to take place this year. So our summer issue, for example, which came out at the end of June and normally would last until Labor Day, was completely gone in four weeks. So, you know, our model is that we work with the small businesses that make up the fabric of Concord. And based on that, we're able to cover the paper printing and delivery of a certain number of issues. I brought up the issue that if we have a projection of 1.5 million individuals flowing through Concord over the course of the year 2025, even if we simply look at a fifty percent increase in the tracked number of visitors through the Town Visitor Center and also estimations of how many people we can expect to be here based on previous big celebrations, there's no way that that number of copies would be sufficient to service the tourism that we're expecting. So I brought up the possibility that if we were requested to print more copies, we would not be able to shoulder the direct cost of that paper and printing. We would not be looking for gaining a profit on that. But I did want to bring up that, you know, we, we are a very small business and we would not be able to totally on our own pay for an additional seventy thousand copies of our publication in 2025, which means there are various ways that that could be addressed, and I don't think that's the point of the conversation today. I think the point of the conversation today is that if the town were to request of Voyager Publishing, and we don't know if they will, to print additional copies, we would ask to be reimbursed for those direct costs. And that would result in a financial transaction.
Okay. Sure. Any discussion or questions from the board?
The question I have, and maybe it's almost a question for that particular Subcommittee whose role I'm not that familiar with, is would a decision like the one that, that's, that's being suggested might need to be made be part of the deliberations of that board? It, it sounds to me like communication strategy around the, the 2025 events is part of that, and that would involve how those things might be, might be publicized.
So I would just ask you to, content is a different question because there's no financial transaction around writing stories in the publication. I'm, I'm simply talking about a hypothetical reimbursement of direct expense should the publication be asked to print additional copies. And a deliberation around content would happen at the Subcommittee level, but a discussion around budget, I am not involved in that conversation. That's an Executive Committee conversation at which the Chair of our Subcommittee would perhaps make a recommendation that would then be deliberated by the Executive Committee.
See, I'm seeing it as almost a channel conversation. Like, for example, one could imagine that, that the town as the host of the event might decide to print, you know, create a publication that was, you know, some commemorative 2025 publication that was standalone and, you know, maybe only had one volume and even try and get people to pay for it, and that would be an all, potential alternative channel for publicizing the, the events. And my question is, would a discussion about whether to do that or use existing publications that already service the community be part of the deliberations of this Communications and Publicity Subcommittee? And if that discussion was being had, how would that? How would that reflect, how would you reflect on that?
I would immediately recuse myself from that conversation. I would have to. I mean, I don't know. How, how do you handle? I assume the town hires on occasion services from individuals who are members of committees across the town. How did? I mean, that's, I, I, I don't know what to say to that other than I suppose that's a possibility. And the question before you is, is a hypothetical conversation about the town starting a, another publication? Does, does the town consider that important enough that you would rather not have the expertise, insight and contribution of, of my particular background? And, and that's really your decision?
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, this is Linda.
Hi, Linda.
Yes, okay. Hi, and you know, thank you, Jennifer, for all the good work that is done in the publication that clearly benefits Concord. But I, I, and I certainly have no issue with what exactly is before us today. However, if I understood Council's letter, should any future involvement involve a contract? Then I think you would have to come back to us and we would have to.
Sure.
Rule on that.
That makes perfect sense.
I have no difficulty with this particular item before us now.
Carrie?
So I agree with a lot of Linda's and Mark's comments, and I want to thank you, Jennifer, for being proactive and bringing this up well in advance of when we get in the thick of 2025, and your expertise has been so valuable on, on the committee. And I also appreciate your willingness to recuse yourself if any, you know, circumstance comes up. I think what I'm uncomfortable about is reading this section. I heard, I think I heard you say that the reimbursement for those extra copies would not be at a profit, but this disclosure you filed says it would be at a small profit margin. And I guess, you know, that would make a difference in terms of the financial interest and whether you need to recuse yourself. The other thing in my mind is whether tax dollars are being, would be spent for, you know, would, would the funds be coming directly from the town? Or would they be coming from private fundraising? And we don't know any of that yet.
Right.
So I think I, and I agree with Linda. I think what you have presenting here, it looks like up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of.
I want to be very careful. We're really entering into the realm of complete hypothesis.
Right.
I was asked to just kind of wrap my head around what if, you know, there's, there's no active conversation around a contract at this time.
Right.
And, you know, we, from the publications perspective, we either don't need to do any of this, or there's lots of opportunity to look for grant funding, multiple municipality, that like there's, it's so in the realm of hypothesis that I really hesitated to even put anything in there other than to explain that I don't think it's unreasonable that if a company is being asked to provide a service, that at least those costs be reimbursed. But again, that's all hypothetical.
Right.
For all I know, the committee may say, we're good, thanks.
Right, so I really appreciate that. And I, I'm agreeing with Linda then. I'm comfortable for now, but this hypothetical that you have here, if something like that does come up in, on the order of magnitude that you have in here, and there's a small for-profit, and definitely I would not be comfortable unless we had further conversation.
That sounds very reasonable.
Okay, great.
So just, just for the record, though, if you vote to approve this, you're signing this form that has that description in there. So if you don't want it in there, you should take it out.
Well, the issue is not whether the activity is useful.
That's correct.
Right.
Or whether it is worthy.
Right.
Or whether you're doing the right thing.
Rather, the potential.
Is unlike the first case where you, it's clear you played no part in the making of the decision, even though you may benefit from it. In this case, you are a member of one or more committees that does or subcommittees that does make the decision. And so whether or not it's profitable or unprofitable is not really relevant. It's whether or not you take part or have the ability to influence a decision that provides payments to you. And the usual conflict of interest kind of standard is that, although it's not universally observed, is that, for instance, when one of us has an involvement in some matter, it's not sufficient to just say, I'm not voting on it, abstaining. It's really required that you actually leave the room and not be present at all when the matter is being not only voted on, but is being discussed, which, you know, may seem like bending over backwards, but that's the way you bend.
Well, that's exactly why I said I would recuse myself.
So having said all that, and we're talking about a hypothetical situation anyway, maybe it, maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't be forced to make a decision on this until the situation actually arises, and then you can bring to us the actual situation and we can look at that situation. It's not that now you're experienced in filling out the form, and it doesn't take a lot of time, and you probably have plenty of notice that this issue is going to be coming up when there's a particular arrangement. And then, you know, the solution may be, the solution may be, rather than you're not performing the service, it might be that you that you take a furlough from your formal relationship with the committee. And because my guess is that the services you provide to the committee in many ways really have very little to do with whether you're a member or you're not a member. You're still participating, you're still writing stuff, you're still, you know.
Well, if I may.
Exchanging material and so on, but it's, it, the problem here really is the formal institutional relationship.
So my understanding from the open meeting law training that I just went through is that serving on a committee, simply serving on a committee, if there's even the possibility of a perception of a conflict of interest, that I have an obligation to signal to the person who appointed me, and therefore that was elevated to this level, that there could be a perception of a conflict of interest, and it's my duty and my obligation to flag that. And then it's up to the Appointing Board to decide whether or not right now there is a potential conflict of interest that outweighs the contribution that I could make to that committee. And it is true that right now there is no project, there is nothing. I could not simply take a furlough because if I were to resign from the committee today, according to open meeting law, I have to wait at least a year before I can request any kind of anything with the town.
Okay, that's a good point. So what do you, what does the board want to do?
What I'm thinking is, listening to what Carrie said, there's no conflict right this moment. So if we were to cross out this hypothetical part or Jennifer refiles without all of this whole scenario, you know.
With simply stating that right now there's no.
There might be in the future thirty-two thousand in this year and this much in that year and blah, blah, blah.
And perhaps replace that with a statement that at any point in the future, should the town wish to engage in a material discussion, that I will present myself again for conversation.
Right, so this whole part here, you know.
Carrie, Carrie Small, right.
Yes, where it outlines all the details of all the monies and, you know, that's all hypothetical. So if we took that part out, then we could vote for the situation right now, which there is not any conflict right now. With the understanding that if there was a conflict, you would recuse yourself and, and come and see us again.
I'd be fine with that.
We want to take advantage of your expertise as much as possible.
I appreciate that.
To be clear, you're talking about striking the portion on page fifty-two of the packet that starts financial interest in the matter in that, that whole section?
Well, not, I, maybe Jennifer should decide and resubmit, but definitely the second paragraph where it says regular advertising will not be sufficient, and we might potentially mean, you know, this much in this year and this much in this year and all that part.
Should I, should I simply state that at this time the Town of Concord takes out advertising that represents less than half percent of our annual revenues? If at any time in the future a material conversation were to occur, that I would be happy to present that as its own conflict of interest discussion?
I mean, what, what captures it for me is actually the very first sentence of that where it reads the Voyager Publishing, publisher of Discover Concord, would like to offer to produce additional copies of Discover Concord. So and it's understandable that potentially that, that's, that potentially you would like to produce additional copies on behalf of the community, and, and I think all of us can intuitively recognize why that would be valuable and sensible thing to do. And we can easily imagine the situation where if there, you know, there's a committee, say you weren't on the committee at all, and they decided to come to you and say, would you like to do this? And you said, sure, we'd do it for this price. And if you're a member of the committee, that, that option of having that negotiation potentially becomes unavailable to you because you participated or might be participating in the discuss, in the discussion to do that at all. So there's some value to, to, to your.
Acknowledging that.
Acknowledging that in the first place and recognizing that if that situation is on the horizon, you, you, you shouldn't be a part of that so that, so that, because what, the other thing that's become clear from this is that this, this, and you said it in your introduction, this would be a very substantial expansion of the actual business enterprise that you're involved in. It's many more issues, many more copies of an issue or issues that have ever been produced before. So that also, from a conflict of interest perspective and public procurement perspective, represents a substantial interest on behalf of you. So it's a matter of protecting, you know, protecting you as well as protecting the community from, from, from this potential. And so while I agree with everyone else, obviously your expertise in advertising Concord and what goes on here is really valuable here.
I also want to just state for the record that I was a very integral part of the initial intermunicipal meeting with the towns of Lexington and Lincoln and went before our state representatives with a presentation that tapped into research that I had done together with research that others did that has resulted in financial benefit to the town and support for the town. And I continue to be an active part of that on behalf of the 250th Committee. So if you were to ask me to step down from that committee, I would not be able to participate in those conversations.
And I'm not asking that. May, may I ask you another question?
Of course.
Have you, um, have you contacted the State Ethics Commission and asked their opinion? And what was their opinion?
Their opinion was that I should proactively let you know that maybe someday this might possibly be a conflict and let you decide. Literally, from my understanding, and I'm not an attorney, but my understanding is the question before us is not what would the outcome of that hypothetical situation be? But is the conflict of interest that I'm declaring to you, just weighing between, is my contribution as a volunteer, does that outweigh the potential for conflict of interest? That's my understanding. And I can't make that decision.
I think the, we, I don't think that we can get involved in the economics of the transaction as to like what percentage of. in the economics of the transaction as to like what percentage of your revenue that would represent, or whether the business is profitable for you or not, or whether you derive more advertising revenues because you have more circulation of the publication for certain issues or whatever. These are all issues that, I mean, are beyond our our grasp and our jurisdiction. And I would, I would, I would not, especially since we only have a hypothetical situation in front of us. I would much prefer to kick the ball down the road and say, we'll deal with it when we have a real situation to look at. And that you can probably just be aware of these concerns and how you structure it and what you say when you come back to us and realize that we really have an interest in protecting, protecting you as well as protecting the town and that what we do and say here will be repeated and will be an example for others who may have similar situations in which the situation and the services are not nearly as desirable as the ones you were proposing. So.
From, from my perspective, as long as it's acknowledged that I have brought it to you as a potential concern and sort of stated for the record that it's really important to me also to protect the town and to protect my own personal reputation. And then if we've all agreed that this conversation doesn't need to happen unless there's actually a material something, then, then I'm fine with that as well.
Well, that certainly is all on the record now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, and we appreciate, I, I would, uh, my preference would be is that we take no action on this and defer it to a time when we have an actual conflict situation to look at and not make a, not make a decision in the, in a vacuum.
And one other quick comment, there may be a way to avoid a future conflict. Maybe if you were to get private donations to cover this.
Absolutely. I see the benefit of that for everyone involved.
Right.
Again, I'm, perhaps I'm being overly conservative in trying to interpret the training, but I just, you know.
Appreciate that. Appreciate you coming in.
It's very public publication, and it's really important to me that we maintain our integrity as well. So.
Did you have a comment? I thought it was.
No, I think, I, I think we're in a good place right now.
Right.
Okay. Thank you then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think that brings us to the town manager's report.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm happy to hold it to the end if you want to get back on track with the agenda, or I could provide it now.
Well, is it going to be exciting?
Of course. I'm not sure. I mean, it, it is a very exciting report. I'm not sure how exciting it will be to people who are here that have agenda items.
I see.
That their time is coming.
All right. So, and we don't, we don't, we don't care about exciting them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll hold it to the end.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we move on to,
Chair's report.
What do we have here? Town manager chair's, chair's report. I also will save all my exciting remarks for the end and in the hopes that people will still be awake when we get to them. And if, if they aren't, they won't be missing anything. And so now we have, we move on to the item, which is the public hearing for a grant of location request for the Department of Corrections. I assume this is a, we have a report, we have a memo in our file, we have a diagram, we have a picture. And I would think it, it's, I think it's a more or less routine matter, isn't it?
Right. I think if it's a public hearing, we have to go open the public.
All right, then let us, I think that's right. You must say in your papers, you moved to open the here, public hearing.
Well, it doesn't quite say that, but I'll work on that. Move to open the public hearing for the grant of location request for the Department of Corrections at twelve thirty-eight Elm Street to nine ninety-nine Barrett's Mill Road.
Second.
And Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo?
Hi.
And myself, Mark Howell. I.
All right. Now we're going to have a public hearing. Would you like to make a brief statement so that we have something in the record other than the application that has been submitted, but it need not be lengthy, and I want to thank you for not bringing a PowerPoint with you.
Hello, my name is Tony Adams. I'm the Vice President of Engineering for a utility design company contract located right up the road in Boxborough. We've been authorized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Department of Correction to act on their behalf for this petition. It's a petition to install a fiber cable from what's known as the farm at twelve thirty-eight Elm Street to connect to their existing system. And it'll be attached to existing utility poles. We met with the town of Concord and they had requirements which we are and we've already applied to the utility pole owners, it's Verizon and CMLP. And we have a mass DOT traffic management plant in place that's not fully approved yet, but we're willing to obviously abide by that. That's about it. This is an example.
And we, and, and the, and the application is in there.
Oh, couldn't hear me?
I think.
Check, check, check.
So I think that probably, do we have any public comment to?
I have two people with me from.
More?
I have two people with me that I just want to recognize from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety, Department of Corrections, Brandon Avila is here behind me and on the, the director is on Zoom.
Well, we like to welcome them to this hearing. So.
Just how close I am? Hello.
All right.
Actually, I brought my guitar.
Okay, well, thanks. Did you, is there anything else you'd like to say? Because you're entitled to make your case. And so do the board have any questions on this and comments?
Yeah, I do. I do have a question on it. My under, is the purpose of this fiber optic cable installation exclusively for the internal use of the Department of Corrections?
One hundred percent.
To interconnect their facilities that are in Concord?
Yes.
Yes. So, um, I know Jeff Cosgrove from the Engineering Department of the Light Plant is also here, and I had asked him earlier to, to provide some information about whether or not the CMLP had reviewed this according to their policies. There is a pole attachment process that, that is in use at CMLP, and I, I understand you've already received the information about that.
Where we've applied and we don't have the license yet. The license takes a little bit. But we have been, we have been in communication with the town and CMLP to make sure that everyone knows we're going to wait till the final license is issued before we do any work. And that includes the mass DOT process too, which is.
I think those, so I think those conditions are in the memo from the Public Works Department.
Well, there's a second memo came today from the CMLP with their conditions.
Yeah.
And, and I assume you're willing to meet those conditions as well.
Yeah. As a regular user of the Barrett's Mill Road entrance to the Rotary, I, I've noted that, and this has been a longstanding pet peeve, more or less of, I think Verizon is responsible, but we have a fairly hazardous looking double pole right at that corner. I think it's the one right above the words Barrett's Mill Road. And one would hope that as part of the make ready work for this particular project, the, that double pole situation might get resolved. Okay.
Any more questions or comments from the board? Linda, you happy?
Yeah, I, I thought the conditions were clearly specified.
All right.
Any comments from the public?
Yes. Do we have any comments from the public? Hearing none?
I would move to close the public hearing on the matter of the grant location of request for the Department of Corrections.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo?
Hi.
Myself, Mark Howell. I.
All right.
Now, are we? Be ready for a motion?
Yep.
Okay, move to approve the grant of location request for the Department of Corrections at twelve thirty-eight Elm Street to nine ninety-nine Barrett's Mill Road with the conditions outlined by this Concord Public Works and Concord Municipal Light Plant included in the meeting packet.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No.
Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo?
Hi.
And myself, Mark Howell. I.
Thank you. Thank you. And congratulations on your your permit.
Thank you, Ms. Board.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jennifer.
And you're welcome to stay for all the other exciting activities that will we'll carry on here. Okay, so.
Tax Relief Committee.
Tax Relief Committee, yes.
I want to thank Shannon for taking the initiative. I'm the liaison for both of these committees. The Tax Relief Committee and the Hugh Cargill and Shannon did all the work. Thank you.
So if you want, I can go through the memo quickly, or if you've already read it or have any questions, I'm happy to answer that.
You want to just maybe give us a brief overview of what the changes are and then before we approve them?
Yep. So the Tax Relief Committee has very sparingly been meeting and having discussions with both of the committees, we decided that it would be fitting for the Hugh Cargill Trust Committee to absorb the responsibilities of the Tax Relief Committee because they were already working together very closely and the Hugh Cargill Trust administers the tax relief as well. So it's just a disbandment of the Tax Relief Committee and an amendment of the Hugh Cargill Trust Committee charge.
And the main duty is the annual fundraising. And the Hugh Cargill Committee discussed that in detail, and they're fine with taking on that duty.
Okay. Is there any further question or discussion from the board? Any comment or comment from the audience, either live or remote? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on.
Move to disband the Tax Relief Committee and amend the Hugh Cargill Trust Committee charges included in the select board packet.
Second.
Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo?
Hi.
Myself, Mark Howell. I.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Shannon, for your wonderful work. So then we have the special parking designation as the next item of business.
And we have Mimi Graney, our Economic Vitality Manager, available on Zoom.
Hello. Shall I present my petitions?
Sure. Could you just give an overview of, of the first item?
Sure. Um, I am the Economic Vitality Manager for the town, and I'm presenting proposals to support two fifteen-minute parking spaces in Concord Center. As folks know, that the town has suspended the enforcement of the parking meters. So there's now just a three-hour limit on parking meters in the downtown, which is not generating enough turnover on some of the parking spaces to be able to serve some of the businesses. So for two of them, we're hoping to, or for two locations, hoping to support faster turnover. So the first one is in front of Walden Liquors. So that's the park, the parking lot that's behind Walden Street and Main Street. That business only fronts onto the parking lot. Sorry, am I okay to continue?
Yes.
That business only fronts onto the parking lot, and that parking lot is used for even longer term parking than three hours. So there had been a kind of unofficial fifteen-minute parking space there under the previous business owner, and those signs were taken down and the business owner is hoping to have those returned. I did go around and talk to all of the nearby businesses and Hope Coffee in particular was very much in support of this because similarly, they have business, customers that come in and just a very short term and would benefit from having a turn, quick turnover. Like Walden Liquors, their, their business only fronts onto the parking lot. And none of the businesses that I spoke to had any objections. And AJ, who's the owner of Walden Liquors, was going to be available to respond to the request on that petition. The other parking space is proposed for in front of Main Street's Market. There had been a temporary one there during COVID to help facilitate, take out the orders. We're hoping to bring that back. For this parking space like Walden Liquors, it's open to any customer. It's not specific to that business, but we are recognizing of the specific needs near those locations. For the spot that's in front of Main Street's Market, it's a spot that's highly visible from both Main Street and Walden Street. And the parking spot that right now is in front of the foot, is it foot, it's not Foot Locker. Sorry, I'm blanking on the name of it. The, the, the shoe, a shoe store. That parking spot is going to be disappearing as part of a redesign with new sidewalks and crosswalks. So we're finding that that one has sort of been operating as a de facto quick turnaround spot. So we are hoping as part of this process to bring in both of those. So I can answer any questions that the board might have.
I have a question. What's the time, the theoretical time limit for a regular spot on Main Street there?
It's, it's up to three hours. So I did put this proposal to the Transportation Management Committee, and they had no objections, didn't see any safety concerns. And they said that basically the plan is to enforce this the same way the town's been enforcing other parking needs. So there wouldn't be any special attention to these spots. We're just hoping that folks will see the intent of the spot and turnover more quickly.
Any questions or discussion?
So I guess my, my only question is whether our transportation, someone who's town employee for transportation or someone else has had a chance to weigh in on this?
I did present this proposal to the Transportation Management Committee. So that's made up of Aaron Stevens, the Transportation Planner, DPW, the Police, Engineering. And they saw no objections to this proposal. Thank you.
Is that the same as the Traffic Safety Committee?
It is.
Okay, so I would just ask in the future if there's a major change in anything to do with transportation or parking, that you also talk to the other committee, the Transportation Advisory Committee. So there's, there's two different committees. One's the staff that you did speak with, the Transportation Safety Committee. And then the other one who doesn't need to really be involved in this, but if there's something major in the future, like if you want to change the three hours to some other number, that that should also go to the Transportation Advisory Committee. Does that make sense?
So would you recommend that this should have gone to, to them or?
One, I think, is just two spots. I just wanted to make you aware that there's two different committees, and they have different roles. One's more of a technical role, the Safety Committee that you spoke with. And that seems appropriate in this case, but the other one is more like a policy setting committee of citizens. And they've been locked out of the loop in some other projects, so we want to make sure they're included in the future.
Okay, great. I didn't know that there was another committee. Thanks for letting me know.
Sure.
Sure. I think we're all set then.
Is there a second?
Very nicely, very nicely done memo. Good pictures.
There's a, there's a portion of the memo that refers to a designated space for veterans, should we be thinking about that now?
Do you want me to treat that separately together? So the other request is a veteran from Concord had had seen elsewhere in Maynard that there had been a designated parking space for veterans and has had ongoing conversations, this has come up numerous times over the last year with thoughts on how this might happen and he's been in conversations with engineering and with Veterans Services. The suggestion would be to either put the, if if the select board did approve such a spot for it to be in front of the townhouse or potentially could be in the parking lot on Kai's Road. It's meant to be more of a symbolic gesture representing the town's kind of thank you to veterans is a low key way to do that. And similarly, there would be no special enforcement of it. There had been some concern about whether you kind of, who could officially use the spot. Talking to Veterans Services, it's meant to be just sort of a an honor system that there wouldn't be required to have veterans plates or any kind of special designation, anybody who identifies as a veteran would be able to park there and it would have a similar three hour limit as other parking spots in the downtown that are general use.
And where's the location proposed?
The proposed is the one right in front of the townhouse, there's an existing poll that could just be signed, we wouldn't even have to put in a new poll.
Okay, good.
Right, I think we're all set.
We're all set. Okay. No further discussion?
No further.
Okay, let's, let's have a nice motion.
Okay. Move to approve the request for special parking designations as included in the select board packet.
Second.
Ms. Sacrament.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Myself, Mark Howell, I.
Good, thank you, thank you for, and you come across, your picture is very sharp and we can hear your voice very clearly, so your system is a, is a very good one, it is, it's really makes things much easier to deal with.
And she's.
We get to hear more from her right now.
Yeah.
So.
She's on for the next item too, for the food truck.
Oh, she, okay. Oh, do we?
Okay.
Is the food trucks next?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm losing my order of things here, food trucks, okay.
But we're fifteen minutes ahead of time, you got to keep.
That's all right, let's, let's not waste it.
Never seated my time.
Right, so for my item around food trucks, there's actually kind of two things to share with you. One is a little bit more just sort of an informational and to see if there's any feedback before it kind of goes out into the world. And the other one is a specific quest around citing food trucks. So as folks will recall at the town meeting, the town approved the placement of food trucks. And there were a couple of key things related to that. One was that the select board would approve the citing of food trucks if they were on public property. And then that the select board would approve if there was ever citing of food trucks more than two at a time. So I've been working with various town staff over the last couple of months, especially around our food safety staff about how to be able to create a process that's transparent, that has ease of use and kind of weighs the need for food safety, but also making it easier for businesses who are wanting to to help bring in our food truck operators. So in terms of the kind of the general regulations or kind of general policy, internal policies that we're wanting to set up. Maybe Shannon, if you could bring up the, the the kind of flow chart that was in the food truck ordinance, I can kind of share it with folks. So the idea that we're sort of developing is that there would be an annual food truck license. And this would be kind of, but right now, if someone is wanting to have a food truck at their event. The, their current, actually, right now, isn't a food truck license, but the health inspector has been trying to accommodate that by kind of doing a more streamlined process. But we're really wanting to be, follow Massachusetts Food Code much more stringently. So the idea would be that we do almost like a food truck rodeo and put it out to all of the food truck operators to invite them to do an annual permit, so they would be kind of properly inspected once a year, but then with that annual permit, we would be able to include them on a list of approved food trucks. So if anyone was wanting to do, have a food truck either on public or private property, they could go and look at that specific list of approved food trucks. If the food truck wasn't on the list, they could then still go and have them inspected, but we're recognizing that it can be a a kind of owner's process to go through the inspection, so we'll kind of streamline it to make it easier for the businesses. And then on the other side of it, someone who's wanting a food truck at their property, we're kind of breaking it up in two ways. If it's private property, we'll have a simple list saying, are they already in the approved list, which means that they're complying with all the food safety regulations. And then there'd be a simple form so that we could keep track of following the part of the ordinance saying that, keeping track that no site has more than food truck, two trucks at a time or more than fifty-two times a year. If it's on public property, we would ask if it's already part of an existing event, so at that time, as part of the regular event permitting, we'd be able to track that. If it's otherwise, so just a standalone food truck that might be just brought in, that those would be brought to the select board to be reviewed. And then this kind of flow chart would also ask, is a way of making it easy for people to know, okay, if there's ever more than two food trucks, those have to go to the select. So I'm just wondering how folks feel about that process. And we're basically internally, the town's ready to move forward, the kind of town staff are ready to start implementing this proposal. It's sort of a soft launch for the food inspectors to get a handle on how that would operate.
Mimi, this is Linda, so one question I have is. For someone who doesn't respond at the time that the annual opportunity is presented, can, and they respond later in the year, can they still apply for the annual?
Yeah, we accept them on a rolling basis and we're sort of trying to accommodate like the food truck season, a lot of them are getting up up to speed in the spring and that's when it's usually not so busy that they could, we could actually kind of set up and make it easier for the inspectors to do them all the time. They, we'd still accept them on a rolling basis, it would just be a little harder to schedule, but we'd still be able to do it.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess I have another question about that process, is there? Is there any? Way that we could leverage other communities' inspection of the trucks, I imagine everybody kind of is looking for the same health and safety guidelines and I imagine it's kind of odorous for food truck operators to have to go around to every single community, so is there a list we could share around the inspection of these trucks so that if they've got an inspection from some other community that's less than six months old or something like that, then they're also automatically enabled.
In terms of food inspection, the town does accept the inspect, there's kind of two parts of an inspection for food trucks. There's the commissary, the location where they're producing the food. So we're not going and inspecting those and we're accepting the license from that town establishment. In terms of the mobile vending, that's kind of a different type of food code. And the, our local, this is part of the quirkiness of Massachusetts is each individual community is responsible for the food safety that's happening in their community, so there is a requirement of it being individually licensed and inspected. And so I have been kind of working closely with Melanie and she feels like this balances kind of the onerous on the business as well as following the regulations that she needs to comply with.
And is, is the establishment of those regulations part of what the Board of Health is doing?
It's part of the Massachusetts Food Code, so it's a state code that Concord needs to comply with and where this food truck ordinance. There's a part of the food trucks that, or is police, the food code places how food trucks have to be inspected and maintained and overseen. So some of it, there's often kind of specifics to individual towns, like some communities have got requirements about whether what kind of fuel you can use, if you can set up additional equipment where you can dispose of your water. So those are kind of Concord specific questions that they'll also want to ask them. It's not quite as easy as a cookie cutter for every town.
So it sounds like a really good, that flow chart looks really thorough and I guess it's not then an RFP process, right? It's a different process.
So we're basically sort of doing the equivalent of an RFP and as long as you complete meet the food requirements, you'll end up on this approved list. And then there's sort of another part of it about what sites the town might want to choose to have, so that's the second part of my presentation is right now, there's a proposal to, that I wanted to request for the use of one parking space in the parking lot behind Kai's Road behind the Visitor Center. Kind of towards where the bridge is going over the back in the, your packets is where I'm presenting, proposing the site for Thursday nights, the last Thursday in September and then the Thursdays in October. To have one single food truck that would be late in the day, starting around four o'clock, that would hit because we were getting a lot of tour groups in through the foliage season and a lot of the food businesses in Concord Center are closed then. So we've got buses coming in that don't otherwise have food ability. So we're wanting to sort of set this up as a pilot and that would be, is part of my invitation, is part of the soft launch to food trucks. To if they get this food, if they're willing to go through the food inspection, they'll be on the list and we'll try to match them up if they're interested in that specific opportunity.
Right, so, so those are the questions I have, so say you have an approved list of, you know, six food trucks, you only have one space. How are you going to decide which truck it's going to be?
So I was going to work with Beth Williams from the Visitor Center and potentially have like a small committee that would go for that, right now, we're going to be lucky if we can recruit one this late in the season. For next year, when we do a fuller launch, I'm looking at having kind of a committee that would help select the food trucks. Right now, Concord has been having food trucks come in for different activities like with the Recreation Division and it's basically just been individuals requesting, there hasn't been an RFP process, so I'm hoping through this that we'll be able to have a pool so that we'll at least be able to then make a selection off of that.
Okay, and a couple of the quick questions, is there any particular type of food that you're looking for, or are you going to be looking for all kinds or variety or?
So for the, this, when we roll this out in a big scale next year, we'll be looking for a wide variety and what I'll do is the, I'm talking with Recreation and to the other folks that are kind of the usual suspects that are looking for food trucks like the Concord Museum, Emerson Hospital, to ask them what types of trucks they're ideally looking for so that we can make that more enticing to the businesses to participate. For this soft launch that we're wanting to do at the Visitor Center, wanting something that's kind of like a dinner type, so not an ice cream, something that's like, you know, barbecue or sandwiches or salad, something that's it will kind of hold people over, assuming they're, they've been on the road and walking around.
Okay, my, one, just one more quick question, I assume you've spoken with the businesses in Concord Center and they're not worried that their business is going to be taken away by these food trucks on Thursdays?
Well, we have been, it's my understanding that businesses have been encouraged often to stay open to accommodate visitors and part of why we're bringing in a food truck is because the, most of the food businesses are closed. So if the businesses were open, that would be our preference to support the brick and mortar businesses. Folks are really looking for like a grab and go sort of situation, the folks that do want to have a sit down meal, we've been working with the Colonial Inn and with Fiorella's and to direct people that, that place, those spaces. But when it's a whole busload of people coming in that really just want a sandwich, they're not able to meet that kind of need.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the designated, this is Linda, the designated space that you're talking about, is that the same one designated space for the tour buses themselves?
Yeah, there's actually two tour bus spaces, so this is the one that would be kind of closer to the bridge area, so it would enable people to kind of encourage them to sit over in that green space after they get their meal.
It's one of the two existing spaces.
Correct.
Over the long run, I would hope that if this proves to be popular and at all successful, we would consider putting in electric hookups for these trucks because one of the my observation about food trucks is one of the more unpleasant portions of them is that they often are, you know, have some kind of gasoline or liquid propane powered generator, both making noise and producing fumes right near the food truck, most recently at the Juneteenth Celebration at the, at the Robbins House, there were, you know, two trucks, one was particularly loud, it was literally drowning out the music and so I hope we might ask these truck operators, what kind of electric hookup might enable them to leave the generator off or at home when they, when they come to, to provide services in Concord and as part of the program.
Could, well, could such a facility actually be a dual purpose charging station for electric vehicles? Because you would then bring the power to a place that when it wasn't being used for a food truck could be used by people to recharge their cars.
It's the, it's a similar type of electric hookup, it's a thirty or fifty amp, you know, type of service, similar to what you see in RV parks is, is helpful.
We have two electric chargers at Kai's Road now.
Yeah, the difference is those, those are going to be metered and associated with some app or something.
Right.
We, but I just think that if we're establishing these positions, it would be really useful to, to be able to do that in a fossil fuel free way. Easy for me to say.
And it would also mean that they could use electric, they could use electric cooking equipment, like electric riddles and so on, would need propane, that'd be nice.
Okay.
Nice, quiet and clean.
I think that's a great idea, right now, we have to, I'm not even sure how popular these are going to prove to be. So I think after our short launch, we'll keep statistics and get a sense of how popular they are and how many people visit and it would be great to think about a long term space for them potentially.
Or even as we get applications in for the, for the licenses, just to ask them what kind of electric hookup they would require to, to avoid using a generator and sort of maybe poll enough to find out what, what we could do to be accommodating in that way.
Yeah, we could even make it a preference, you know, we ideally want a business that could, would do an electric hookup. So in terms of the, the kind of one specific request is the select board to ask if you'd be all right for citing of a food, a single food truck in that location for those five Thursdays.
So are we being asked to vote on just that one application for that one site or to adopt the rules and regulations? We're not adopting the rules.
Right.
We're just making the exception that we could make under the town meeting vote.
Yeah, we're, we're essentially enabling town staff to, to provide access to this parking space on five Thursdays from September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three to October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three during the hours of four PM to seven PM.
So that's pretty low impact and we can talk about the, the general things.
Right, this is the pilot, the soft launch.
Yeah, an attempt to find out how it works.
Right.
Okay, so.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yep.
Okay, move to approve the request to cite a food truck on public property in the town in the Concord Town Parking Lot on Kai's Road on Thursdays only, September twenty eighth through October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three from the hours of four PM to seven PM.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'll second that if nobody else will.
I could second it.
Okay. You just seconded, well, that's good. You just seconded? Well, that's good.
Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
Ms. Escavita?
Hi.
Myself, Mark Howlai.
Okay, I was too anxious to move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your take out of.
So um, so the next item is the um, review of the priorities of the, under the housing production plan, and I will say that um, it'd be, uh, we welcome the opportunity to have you make the presentation, but I I Keith, I will advise you in advance um, that um, your, your letter that you sent us, sending out your priorities, um, I think was a good job and we're likely I think we're likely to have a motion to approve those priorities you set forth in your letter without having to spend going into the details.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman Keith Bergman, uh, fifty six White Avenue, uh, and Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust and after forty years in municipal government, I'm always happy to take yes for an answer. So um, and I will just, I will spare you the the presentation, which is uh, which was made to the um, uh, Concord Housing Roundtable uh, earlier this month and we, we did a revised version of the most recent meeting of the um, of the trust. First, I want to apologize for being here in August, uh, that uh, that we're, it's, no, it's a tough time to meet, it's a tough time to get a lot of uh, committees together, but the trust has been, we've had sort of a a deadline uh, that we're working around of the uh, of September eighth is September eighth is when the uh, community preservation uh, funding applications are due for the coming cycle and we wanted to have the opportunity to check in not only with the select board, but with our housing partners to make sure that we were all aware of what projects were uh, uh, in in the works uh, for uh, implementing the uh, housing production plan. And so uh, in, and so we appreciate the opportunity to uh, come here tonight to the board. Uh, it, it's, it's been my pledge to the uh, select board uh, for the, the time that we've been together, that we're going to make sure that we keep communication between the housing groups and the select board so that there's no disconnect and so that uh, there aren't any mixed signals. So this is all part of that tonight and I'm and I'm uh, happy to uh, happy to have you take, take up the the matter.
I, I would add that the meeting package, it was uh, online for for Kai's, I mean, it has all of the detailed um, checklists and all of the information that anybody might want to review in connection with this, the production plan. Is there, is there any uh, questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I, I do have a question and I unfortunately I wasn't able to attend the last housing roundtable, so excuse me if I'm asking. So I'm, I'm reviewing the packet page seventy five, which is the draft worksheet for roundtable consensus. And it seems to me that there are a couple of questions there about um, whether town ARPA funds are, might be available and and how much might be coming from the CPC. So are you looking for our input on those at this point or?
But I, I would, I would uh, say, based on the information that we've gathered, I'd say not, that, that uh, it's uh, we've uh, met with the CPC uh, to, to see what their situation is. We got the, the signal from uh, the town manager that there will be a funding round uh, for uh, town ARPA funds this fall as part of the capital improvements process. So, so we're content just to be able to, you know, put in applications in both, in both of those directions and uh, stay on your, you know, your radar screen and CPCs and see how it, how it goes. And if you find that there's free cash that you don't need, that's always good too.
So just to clarify that, I, I kind of had the same question. Um, I was out of town and missed the roundtable, but I do, I did watch it um, later on and it's great to be um, involving everybody and continuing the uh, communication. Um, so in the past few years, we've had five hundred thousand every year from free cash, except last year. We had it, I think, from ARPA. So um, I know eventually we're hoping to get a dedicated permanent source of funds and these are all temporary. Um, are you actually looking for um, five hundred thousand again, or are you looking for five hundred thousand from ARPA and five hundred thousand from CPC?
We are applying for up to five hundred thousand uh, from both sources and would think that uh, and and know that in in uh, both cases, it's not just what we're applying for that is important, but also who else is applying for the limited funds that you have? CPC has limited funds, they may not be able to go that high. I, I think it's our hope somewhere between the two we can reach our, our usual, you know, annual goal of five hundred thousand.
Okay.
Because even though we have a uh, uh, trust fund balance right now, three point one million, we don't get anymore. That's it. That, that's all that we'll get until and unless there's additional funding approved by town meeting in an appropriation or un- until and unless the, the Home Rule petitions for a real estate transfer fee. So so what we're looking at with a long list of projects that could go forward and several that look like they're ready to go and including ones that are, that, that the uh, that this board is, has expressed interest in, including put, having some money in reserve if the uh, host community agreement with the, with the forty B developer needs fun, funding uh, from, from the town. It's great that we can put that money uh, aside and that it would be there uh, for just a vote by the trust and not having to go back to town to get it. So, so uh, that's, I mean, I mean, our I'll say my shortlist, Asabet proceeding with that to completion, uh, pre-development for Junction Village.
And what's involved in that pre-development?
It's, it's a, a request for fifty thousand dollars at this point to help them manage the uh, the RFP process and and uh, there's, if there's additional site work or whatever that would need to be done as they uh, issue their RFP this fall and then are start, starting to deal with uh, with developers. And we have funded uh, pre-development for other uh, for other projects.
Okay. And the other question that I had a question about was where it says feasibility, specific sites, one hundred thousand, can you explain?
Yeah, this was a suggestion as we were going through our, our list, it was a suggestion that Liz Russ from uh, uh, the Regional Housing Services suggested that we may want to hold back hun- hundred, hundred thousand dollars uh, so that there's money if some other site that is in the housing production plan and is in is advancing uh, sooner than that we might have thought, or there's you know, no site work or or that that's been done yet, that we'd have someplace to tap into to do that, to do those uh, studies. We're mostly focused though on the big picture of spending uh, spending the funds to produce uh, as the memo says, to put the housing funds to work producing units.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe further? Any questions? Any further comments? Any questions or comments from the remote? Linda, you're leading forward.
Um, no, I think it's been well presented and I'm anxious to hear the uh, form of the motion.
So am I.
Okay. Good.
So the former of the motion is to be determined during the meeting. So the question before us is, is what, what action would be um, productive for us to take?
Our, our, our ask is that uh, is rather formal since the bylaw under which we're established uh, uh, requires us to get select board approval of any policy statements that we develop. And so we've submitted in, in the memo of August twenty third, a policy uh, statement with three provisions uh, to, to uh, support the trust in allocating funds to advance certain projects this year as those projects become ready to proceed and by inviting funding applications, by supporting the trust in uh, reserving uh, other funds to advance projects anticipated to be ready uh, to apply to the trust uh, uh, at a later, later date and by encouraging the trust to apply for additional funding from both the CPC and ARPA funds and continue to pursue state authorization for the, for the real estate transfer fee.
Just could you pass that to Mark for the motion? That's the, that's the memo that he is reading.
Yeah, I'm looking at something else. Okay.
Um, while he's looking at that, I actually have another question. I'm looking at again, this draft worksheet for roundtable consensus. And if I add up all of those, the total is going to, I think, exceed what your balance is. Is that right?
Well, in, in the column where it has project amount, the very first, the very first column includes ones that have been funded already.
I need to subtract those.
Yeah, because we, we lumped them together by uh, the uh,
Okay.
housing uh, production plan strategy.
Come out less than.
It's, it's less than, but only because some of the numbers we don't know yet. We don't know, for example, what at what cost would the town be able to acquire the surplus state property at ninety one
Right.
the Main Street. It hasn't, it has an appraised value, hopefully it can come in under the, other, under that um,
Right.
but there's no dollar figure attached to it yet.
Okay.
Same, same with the, the forty B host community agreement that, that will be determined through the negotiations.
I think we're ready. I think we're ready. Let's go for it. I think I thought that we had, would have a motion which is just accept the uh, recommendations of contained in this letter, but I see you have marked it up and will make it.
Yeah, this is, this is more specific. So we move that pursuant to CMHAT bylaw, section six, item eighteen, to approve a policy statement direct developed by the trust for the proposed spending plan to implementation, implement production strategies in the FY twenty three to twenty eight housing production plan as follows. Support the trust in allocating its funds to advance certain projects in FY twenty four as those projects become ready to proceed and by inviting funding applications. Support the trust in reserving its funds to advance projects anticipated to be ready to apply to the trust for the funding in FY twenty four and beyond and encourage the trust to pursue additional funding to implement housing production plan strategies by A, applying to the Community Preservation Committee for further CPA funds and to the town manager through the capital improvement process for town ARPA funds and B, continuing to pursue state authorization for a real estate transfer fee and building permit surcharge to fund the trust.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
Ms. Escavita?
Hi.
And myself, Mark Howlai. Thank you.
Thanks very much. We've got a lot of work to do and we'll be back.
Thank you.
Okay. On to Hanscom.
All right.
Okay, Hanscom.
Hanscom.
This will probably be pretty quick.
I hope so. We spent, I think we've been through it a number of times.
Right. So um, as you know, four towns were working on a letter altogether to send to Governor Healy. Um, we've seen a few drafts. On the last draft that we had, um, I know Mary Hartman raised a good uh, question and they did uh, direct it in this version. Um, three of the four towns liked the long version, but uh, Bedford wanted to shorten it a lot and they've eliminated uh, the letter is now about half as long as it was before. And so we have two choices. Uh, one, we can go along with this letter and we'll be all set. Every town will approve it and, or has approved it. Um, or we could keep trying to go around and round and, and get back some of the stuff that was eliminated, but I'm not sure that would happen. So um, although I'm really disappointed that some of this other stuff has been eliminated and three out of four towns wanted it, I think for the sake of having it done and having a letter actually go to the governor, probably we should approve the draft that's in the packet tonight um, and get it finished.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, let's.
And, and Linda may have some other comments from Hats.
Um, no update from Hats. In fact, I was going to ask if we, if anyone had received any uh, feedback, whether the, any other town has since voted on this. I think we were the, one of the early ones on to have a select board meeting to do so. And the reason I raised that question, um, is obviously I'd be interested in how they're going to proceed. But you know, I, I do realize that this was put forward with the idea that this is select board meetings for each of these towns was staggered and this appeared to be what everyone could agree to.
Correct. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty certain that all four towns are going to approve this version because it's been around the block enough times. Um, and we're frankly running out of time. We wanted to get this done by Labor Day and get it on the governor's desk.
Let's just get it done, right?
Okay.
And, and this doesn't have to be the last letter we're ever going to write.
Right.
Um, and in fact, we're going to come to that question in a few minutes. So can we just have a motion to approve this letter if we have no further comments?
Move to approve the revisions to the letter to the governor regarding Hanscom Northfield expansion as included in the select board meeting packet.
Second.
Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
Ms. Escavita?
Uh, I, because I'm, as Henry's points out, um, we have another avenue going forward.
And myself, I.
Good. So, thank you very much for your work on that. Now, because you did such a wonderful job, you've got more work to do. Isn't that the way the system works?
Sure, whatever.
I mean, you, you must be really warmed up on Hanscom. And um, you know, in our package, we had the request from the FAA about comments on noise. And um, there's a deadline that's coming up fairly soon. I forget what it is, a deadline September twenty ninth for comments to the FAA. And um, noise is bad, is that right?
Generally.
Noise is bad, we're against noise. Uh, and um, so can we delegate to you the um, task of writing a noise letter to the FAA on behalf of the?
Sure, I can, I can write a draft and um, it can come to the board if that's how you want to do it.
That's, that would be wonderful.
I will not be at the next meeting though, um, but um.
Next meeting is going to be the eighteenth, I believe. You won't be at the eighteenth.
And that is, that's the only meeting that you have scheduled for September.
Now and uh.
I can send my draft to Shannon.
Okay. All right, let's do that.
Okay.
Terry, I can also offer Chris Carmody to help with that, if, if that would be of help to you. He, he does.
Well, maybe um, after the board comments come back, it, um, he can finish it up or we, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're get, we're gonna, you're gonna call you. Okay. So we're getting, we're gonna, you're gonna call you and, um, Carrie, you're gonna coordinate getting some kind of a draft before us for our next meeting, which is our next, and it's also our last meeting before this deadline.
Right.
Okay, good. All right. So that takes care of that. And then we are.
Do you want to see if there is any public comment? I know we had a couple of people walk in.
Our public is dwindling.
Yeah.
Are there any, is there anybody here who's in favor of noise at Hanscom? No?
What this is, this is, um, separate from the Hanscom, uh, project. The FAA is doing a noise policy review. The, the noise policy they have now is decades old. And they're finally going to revise it. So they're taking public comment. So all of you are welcome to send in your comments. All the details are, are in our packet we send it to. And I guess the select board now is also going to formally make a comment.
We have a person on Zoom that would like to be recognized.
Okay. Yes.
Hi, yes, this is Heidi Kater, uh, 100 Elm Brook Lane in Concord. And I just wanted to report an incident to the select board that happened yesterday on Sunday. It was, um, late morning, probably 11:00 AM to noon in that range. And there was a jet, uh, airplane that flew so close, uh, to my home and in the neighborhood that it, it caused seismic shaking, truly. Um, the, the walls shook, the windows shook and items fell off the wall of my home. Uh, my son, who, uh, is a teenager, uh, came to me scared because he thought an earthquake had happened. And he didn't hear it as I did because he didn't have his hearing aids in at the time, but he felt it and he, uh, you know, he was quite shaken by it. And I just put a notice out to my neighbors in Elm Brook Lane to see if anyone else witnessed it. And I did hear from one other family, uh, the email just went out today because the incident was yesterday. And I heard back from one family so far and they, you know, they called Hanscom to see if there was, um, what do they call it? Not Blue Devils, some, some air show that they used to have in town. And they wanted to know if, if that was happening, um, and, and they thought that the roar of the engine was so loud that it was surely gonna, um, crash in our neighborhood. I, I don't know how close the plane was to the home, but, you know, it was unsettling and, um, you know, that's, uh, I, I'd never witnessed anything like that before with regard to a plane due to Hanscom. But, um, I just wanted the select board to know.
Where, where do you live?
Elm Brook Lane, which is off Virginia Road, which is the road that leads to Hanscom. So it's quite close to the airport. But that's never happened before in my home. I've never had such a close call. I didn't see the plane because I was comforting my son, um, at the time. So I didn't peek out to see what kind of a jet it was, but it really, it was, the house was shaking. And, you know, I thought it must have been so close to the roof and the roar was, you know, so loud that, uh, it was, it was quite shocking. So, you know, I just wanted to report it. So that everyone's aware.
Thank, thank you for reporting that. And if, if I may, I just want to read from this FAA, um, request for comments. This is exactly the kind of thing they're looking for. They want to know the, um, event, um, how close are to the airport? What was the time of day and the, um, date? And know the type and number of flights. And they want to know the impacts to you and your family, like sleep interruption, physical, mental wellbeing, emotional impacts, work, learning concentration, effects on children. All of this is, um, at the, near the end of our select board packet. Um, who you send it to, what the deadline is, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I urge as many people, you know, out there listening, if you have any incidents, please fill out the public comment form and send it in.
Could I request to, um, I don't know if the town can access this information, find out uh, what planes, you know, inter, jets were flying, um, around that time yesterday on Sunday. In that range of, you know, say 11 to 12, maybe expand it because I didn't know at the time, maybe expand 10 to two and or 10 to one.
Oh, I will contact the, um, Concord rep to the, um, Hanscom, um, Field Advisory Commission market and see if he can track that down.
Okay, it was quite extreme. I mean, it's worthy of noting, um, you know, the windows of my home shook and things fell off the wall. So it was, you know, caused seismic shaking, you know, similar to an earthquake that would be like, you know, at least two on the Richter scale or something. Um, it was significant. So thank you for checking. I appreciate it.
And, and if you would give your information, um, to Shannon, we'll be able to, an email, we'll be able to get back to you.
All right. Thank you.
Can we, could we set up a listserv for comments on Hanscom the way we have it for people who want to get information about planning board or Board of Appeals or Board of Health or so on, so that there was, so that we could actually have, um, build up a mailing list of people who would, um, we could send out a note to, to ask them to give us, um, their anecdotes.
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah. I think, uh, Lois Suarez has an additional comment.
I'd just like to say, um, I was also heard that same, apparently the same thing. It's probably between 11:15, quarter, 12:00 Sunday. Um, and it stood out because it did shake my apartment. I'm at 34 Everett Street, neck, physically next to the scout house. And it's, the amount of vibration, I don't think anything fell off the wall here, but it was very noticeable that the loudness. And again, I, I question, it's like, is this going to fall out of the sky? It was that loud, which is not the usual, but not unusual. Thanks.
Thank you. And the, the person whose Zoom name is Voter Choice Massachusetts, did you also have a comment you were trying to make?
Hi, thank you very much. I'm Kate Kavanaugh. I live at 409 Old Bedford Road. And I just want to join the other people who've said the same thing. I was on a Zoom call, uh, for work actually yesterday morning and the per, the people on the call were just kind of stunned. They said, where do you live? Well, I live under the flight path of Hanscom. So it was, it was pretty dramatic.
Is there any chance that call was recorded?
Was it Zoom?
Oh, my Zoom call? No, I'm sorry. It was not.
Okay, just wondering.
My apologies. Kate Kavanaugh, thank you very much. Appreciate you taking this up, everybody.
All right. So we'll put something together and anybody who was watching or listening who has any comments or anecdotes, you can send them to Shannon at, um, conquerma.gov, right?
It's S. McAndrew at conqueredma.gov. That's M C and then like the name Andrew.
Thank you.
And that was Sunday, July 27th. Sometime between 11:30 and
No.
August 27th.
Okay. So now we're gonna move on to, okay, now are we gonna get the exciting? No, we're not gonna get the, um, the, not gonna get the town manager's report. We're gonna get the exciting goals, town manager's goals.
Yeah.
And departmental goals.
Okay, so actually this was not in the package. It was distributed yesterday. A list of goals for fiscal 24. The document is.
Sorry, we can't hear you.
Sorry. Can you hear me now, Linda?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So the document is set up much like fiscal 23, um, because the same types of issues, priorities, concerns that, that were in existence last year when, when the goals were established, really are, are still prevalent. There are six areas that, um, in, in which we've identified goals, including organizational resilience, diversity, equity and inclusion, governance and communications, financial resilience, state and regional initiatives and economic vitality and strategic planning. And so there are, um, some of the goals that are, that really are just to carry forward from fiscal 23 because substantial completion is not met. Some of them are slightly different because they're talking about the same types of things. For instance, preparing a capital plan that, that exists every year. And then some are new. And I thought it probably made sense to highlight the new areas and then certainly open this up to any questions. Um, and, and I would preface this by saying that, that every year we start with goals. We have every intention of, uh, making great progress on those goals, but things happen. And, and this past year, some of the major things that took time away from some of these goals. We were just talking about Hanscom. We've spent quite a bit of time on Hanscom over the last several months for sure. The MBTA zoning, uh, not necessarily something that we were thinking about so much in fiscal 22 when we put these goals together for 23. The Novo Riverside, um, project that's taken a significant amount of time. And then I'd mentioned the, um, MWRA, the, the potential for the town to be involved in regional water, uh, going forward, that has taken up quite a bit of time as well.
Reconsider these things that come up like that to be opportunities.
Opportunities for sure, for sure. They are opportunities. And so I, I would like to point out when we have an opportunity like the regional dispatch that did not have a lot of support, spending staff time on something like that, when we could be working on, on other projects and initiatives, makes it difficult to, to budget the time for that.
That's a disopportunity.
That's a disopportunity, sure. So under, if I could just go through these at a real high level, again, just touching on the new, under the category of organizational resilience, um, while we made a lot of progress and actually were able to implement a new non-union class and comp plan. One of the things that I had hoped that we would be able to get to by now is really defining a compensation strategy. And, and when I say define, I mean, something on paper that people can see that we can use in our recruitment materials. And we did not complete that because we spent more time than what I had anticipated just getting through the class and comp study, uh, which I think is, was a really good project. But we still would like to have a documented, um, compensation strategy. So that would be something we would be working with the personnel board on. Um, we also have a lot of work to do with, with collective bargaining agreements. At the end of this fiscal year, um, five of our six collective bargaining agreements will have expired. So we, we will need to review all of those agreements, identify anything that the town would be looking for in terms of, um, provisions within the contract. And we'll need to spend a reasonable amount of time doing a salary survey to make sure that we are in the same market with our union employees as we are with our non-union employees.
Can we, can we stagger the terms of those agreements when we renew them? So that they don't all come, come due at the same time? Wouldn't it be really great to have, you know, have to be, be able to do one a year instead of five all in one, one or two years?
So there's two schools of thought on that, yes and no.
Well, those are the usual options. Yes. And then there's maybe.
Yeah, in, um, I, I think you can make a, a case really for either. It is nice to be considering all salaries at the same time, um, to make sure that you're being equitable with your compensation strategy. But it does mean in the year that you are working on those collective bargaining agreements, that there's a, a pile of work that doesn't exist in, in other years. So I, I think traditionally here, we only have one, uh, contract that is off cycle. I'm not sure how it got off cycle, but I, I think at one time all of the contracts were coming up at the same time. And I do, is as much additional work as it provides in, in the year that you're negotiating. I do think it's in the best interest of the town to be negotiating all of the contracts at the same time.
Which one is off cycle?
The firefighters are off cycle just by a year. So I did, I did mention the recruitment strategy, um. We, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time. We started talking about it through the work of the Personnel Study Task Force. We have seen a significant amount of, of turnover in our workforce. Um, it started before the pandemic. We had an older workforce. We had a lot of people retiring through the pandemic. People's priorities have changed. Different employers provide different opportunities. For instance, there are a lot of people that work remote, either full or partial part of their work week. That's not something that translates particularly well in a municipal setting. Some, some municipalities seem to have better success with that. It's, we're finding it difficult here to provide significant regular remote work opportunities for the vast majority of the workforce. Um, so because we're not providing that, we need to be able to talk about the things that we, we do provide. We have, uh, we, we provide terrific professional development opportunities, training opportunities. Our equipment is up to date. Uh, we provide competitive salaries. And, um, we have some interesting benefits that you don't see in other communities with, through our recreation programs. We do allow employees to enroll in recreation opportunities, the BD Center at a discount, the, uh, summer camps for employees, children at a discount. So those are the things that we need to be able to.
Down the street to get a pizza for lunch?
You can do that too, right? Where a lot of our offices are within walking distance of, of businesses. So those are the types of things that, that we need to promote. And we'd like to work with an employee group to, you know, a focus group to talk about what are the things that you like about working with the town. So that's something that, that we're hoping to do pretty, pretty quickly. Um, the other things in the organizational resilience category really are carryforwards where we're trying to identify, um, sustainability and, um, you know, making sure that we have succession planning and making sure that our, uh, we have people who are ready to resume or assume the roles of crew leaders and supervisors and supervisors that are ready to, to move on to be division managers and, and ultimately department managers. So those are things that we continue to work on. In terms of our DEI goals, we did complete a needs assessment in May of 2023. And we are, um, next month going to be working with our DEI consultant to build our own internal strategic plan, similar to what the DEI mission is doing. Um, we have instituted, we call them T with the town manager. It's a once a month opportunity for employees, either individually or in groups to book an appointment with the town manager. There's a, a specific day of the month, time of day. And we've done that three times and I'm proud to say I've been sold out all three times. So that's been a, a great opportunity for employees to, for, for us to get to know each other outside of the traditional chain of, of command. And, and it's been, um, a great opportunity.
How many employees are there at a time?
So they, they've all been individual appointments and we've had six each time. So 20 minute appointment and it's, it's really been, it's been very well received. And I've received a lot of helpful feedback as a result. And another thing that is new is we have a, a professional development committee that is getting up and running. And we'd like to offer professional, internal professional development opportunities. Um, ideally monthly, I think we're going to start with quarterly and we would use existing resources. So we have, um, resources that are available to us through the. So we have resources that are available to us through the various benefits that we provide employees through the health insurance. There's there's a lot of different resources. We also have a tremendous number of very talented staff members who are trainers in their own field and have a lot to offer to the group as a whole. So we're looking to do that as well. Under effective governance and communication, I think the the newest thing here is to institute monthly management team meetings. This is something I've been talking about internally for for what feels like a very long time. So we have a weekly meeting of the senior management team. So that is all all department managers. But we have a lot of division managers, some of whom manage very large divisions, and they are not meeting on a regularly basis. This would be a monthly meeting that would include the senior management team and division managers. It would be a very structured meeting where there would be an agenda in addition to just becoming more aware of what's going or making sure that that everybody is aware of what's going on in town. This would be an opportunity for division managers to be making presentations. This would give them a forum to to make presentations to a group just to get some experience because making presentations is not always the easiest thing for people. So we're I'm looking forward to doing that and.
Are are these in in person or are these hybrid, these meetings? Or have any or is it some of each?
Yeah, so the the intent would be that they would be in person, but there are obviously times when people need to be remote for a variety of reasons. And I think it's good practice, frankly, for people to be making presentations when they have people in front of them and on Zoom. I know when when we started on Zoom, it 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 certainly took a while to get used to making a presentation when you don't have the benefit of visual cues to see if people are listening, engaged, hearing you. So we would be providing that opportunity as well. I think that's probably the most important item there, not that not that the other things aren't important. We have, you know, continuing goals in terms of making sure board and committee appointments are up to date, that we are refreshing our database, making sure that we're reaching out to community members so they know of these opportunities, making sure our website is up to date. In terms of the financial resilience category, these are listed as new. Some of them are new because we're we're doing the same thing in fiscal, going forward into fiscal twenty five as as in fiscal twenty four. So that's why I identified them as new. But as was mentioned this evening, we will have a formal application period for ARPA funding for fiscal twenty five as part of our CIP process. And we're looking for that notification to go out just after Labor Day. We would be developing a five-year capital plan. And a few meetings back, maybe three meetings ago, we set the dates for those different public hearings on the Capital Improvement Plan. We will be working with the Finance Committee to develop both five and ten-year financial forecasts. We do have a risk management committee that was established in fiscal twenty three, and they meet on a monthly basis and they take up different activities, review different activities. We would like to put more emphasis on working with both CPS and CCRSD on risk management. A number of our more significant losses over the last couple of years have been in the schools, and we want to make sure that they understand that we are available to help with identifying risks and putting mitigation plans into place. And then the last item here is just aggressively monitoring and tracking grant opportunities. This is something that we've put more emphasis on, particularly in the past year. Chris Carmody, who you all know and work with on a regular basis, he has taken up the, one of his major tasks is as risk and compliance manager. So he's he's looking for grant opportunities because there just are a number of grants that are available both at the federal and state level. And we'd like to make sure that we get our fair share here in Concord as well. And then just the last two categories, regional and state interests. I've noted that we'd like to continue to build the relationships that we have established with our local state, our state and federal legislative delegation, both with the legislators and with their staffs, and then with the governor and the lieutenant governor. I think we've been able to make some good progress in recent months. They certainly know who Concord is, so that's that's very helpful. And then continuing to work with MWRA, the Mass Water Resources Authority, and neighboring communities to further investigate the feasibility of regional water going forward. And that's something that you will be hearing more and more about. And then finally, in economic vitality and strategic planning, I did carry forward the the goal about two 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 nine Main Street, implementing strategies, innovations and staffing models to streamline permitting and and the regulatory process that is a carry forward. And then the new goal here is to identify and develop a strategy to ensure implementation of recommendations, goals, objectives of key planning documents and a mechanism to track. So we have a number of planning documents, right? Just endless planning documents. And we don't collectively do a great job of identifying what what are we chasing and and can we check that box?
That's my question, is it when you have a list of like fifty goals and objectives, how do you how do you decide which ones you deal with first and how much time you spend on each one? Or is it just kind of what hits your desk that morning? And then you say, okay, that's goal number twelve, we'll deal with that.
Yeah, so I I would like it to be less of what hits my desk and and more strategic planning. I I think last year we made, I think we made really good progress in a lot of areas, not in every single area because other opportunities presented themselves. It's not, it's not just me working on this. We have, we have a big organization and a lot of people that are involved in advancing these different initiatives. And we won't complete everything, but it it certainly is opportunistic. You know, we we are all aware of what these goals and objectives are, and and some of them move at different paces. And and we keep them in the front of our mind so that when we have time and synergies come together, that that we're making progress.
By way of order of magnitude, if you have the senior management team and the division managers all in a room together, how many people is that?
So that would be, you know, that's probably thirty to forty individuals. What I've found in the in the meetings that I've had with with people and in the the meetings I was talking about earlier, it's it's interesting. I have people from all different places in the organization, different departments. And there's, there's a lot of interest in doing more and being involved in more and being given opportunities to participate in projects, on committees, teams. And that's something that we have to leverage. And I think by having a meeting with with more people, more opportunity to find out as as a group who has capacity and interest to advance projects.
About the number that we get for the monthly chairs meeting.
Yes.
And it's, it's really useful and it's a, it's a good size. And most of them show up in person. And it's, it's, it makes a big difference to have that contact with people.
Yes.
I think both of those types of meetings are great opportunities for going across silos because that's a big problem sometimes when people get stuck in the mission of their one department. But to have these meetings where we can cross silos and work together.
Yeah, and my, my, my idea basically is that, you know, when you compare that number of senior managers to the number of goals that we're talking about and and looking at a year or something, that's basically one line item per person kind of thing. So it's not, it doesn't work out that way, but it it suggests that, you know, there, there is a a a pretty broad team to to spread out the these types of initiatives.
I think Linda had.
Yeah, if I I just may follow up. You know, speaking of bringing all these people together and and the synergy that is created by that, you know, we currently have a lot of vacancies and or interim people who are only going to be with us a months more or two months more, that kind of thing. And I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, that's a huge impact and a huge priority. And I I'm just wondering if there is some plan that that can be talked about, if not tonight, sometime soon.
Yeah, so I'm I'm happy to talk about the probably the two key vacancies that we have, the Chief Financial Officer and the Human Resources Director position, both of which are filled with with very talented retirees who who are working with us on a contract basis. Both of them are available essentially for the amount of time that we need them for, but not necessarily a hundred percent in person past cer- certain dates. So the the Chief Financial Officer position, we advertised that probably going on a month ago. We actually have a very strong candidate pool right now, and we are looking to schedule interviews about two weeks out. And I'm going to be calling on some people to help with those those interviews. But I was very, very pleased with the applicant pool that we have for that position because that is a a very hard position to recruit for. The number of communities are advertising for same or similar position and have been for a very long time. So I think we're, I I think we are very likely to get a very strong candidate out of out of that pool. The Human Resource Resources Director position, that is going to go live by the end of this week. And based on what I've heard from people within the profession, I would expect that we would have a number of of applicants there as well. Although I will be very sad when our interim director, Kimberly Crum, is has moved on because she's, she's just been, she's been phenomenal.
Add to your list, though, that your deputy town manager is doing double duty at the moment.
She is, but intentionally. So Deputy Town Manager Megan Zamudo is also serving as the Interim Director of Planning and Land Management. And when she was given that assignment, we decided she would do that for a six-month period. And and then we would, she would provide a an analysis and.
A what?
An analysis to, you know, provide her recommendations. And so we are probably, well, three months, three months into that, probably, it probably feels longer than that, but it's it's three months. And it's been very helpful to to have her. She is not a planner by profession. She comes from the the management side. And so it's helpful to see and to hear her observations from that perspective.
And she's, there's a a pretty good number of really great case studies going on right now in that area that, you know, that she's learning from.
She's, she is definitely, she is definitely learning a lot. It's a, it's a busy department that has big projects and initiatives in front of it. So the the department is is challenged with the workload for sure.
And our COA Director, interim director, I I think terminates on August thirty one. So are there?
The, the, the COA Director is also available for the time that we need her. I did meet with the COA Board, I guess, probably last month, and we agreed that we would start advertising, we wait to get past Labor Day and that we would advertise for that directorship after Labor Day. So we are working on that recruitment as well, and that will go live. But we are also fortunate to have an a very strong interim candidate, a retired COA Director filling that role right now. We felt that the summer is not necessarily the best time to recruit. And and the COA Board agreed, and and we will get that going as well and have heard that there is a lot of interest in that position.
Another comment that I had on the goals or question, I guess. So this looks like a very comprehensive list, a lot of goals. There, in my mind, it seemed like there was possibly one area in the financial resiliency that is missing, which is something like figuring out tightening up user fees, enterprise chargebacks, chargebacks from schools, you know, all of all of those kinds of formula things that need to be redone to tighten things up so that our budget is staying within the guideline without having to do any layoffs.
I certainly can add something.
Yeah, I'd I appreciate that. I just feel like we all have to start watching out for that, being more careful, all the, all the cost centers, town and school. But I think it's a really good list. I agree with you, there's a lot of projects, a lot of progress last year and a lot of carryforwards because they're multi-year projects. These are, some of these are can't be finished in one year. Like DEI, they say is a journey, right? It's not going to be finished in one year.
Yeah. And so you did also ask about department goals. I included the is in the published budget. If you look through those, you can see that that some are more measurable than others. Some, some really are tasks. Some are just things that, just work that that recurs year after year. I know I have heard recently, in the last couple of months, some interest in in seeing some measurable goals specifically in the area of sustainability and economic vitality. And so I I do think over the next year, it would be beneficial to to start putting together some measurable goals for the departments rather than just having sort of broad statements or or tasks or things that are really hard to measure without doing a survey or something that they're not easily measurable.
I I think that's, this is Linda, I think that's a good direction. And as long as it doesn't become reductionist, because we have some areas and understandably so, I think COA has had to do this in the past, and so is Recreation, where they're down to, you know, X number of total number of camp days or something, which is across all the individuals who have enrolled. And while that may meet some requirement that they have, that isn't necessarily where we want to be or only there, let me put it that way. I'm happy that you have aggressively monitored. I'm happy that you have aggressively monitored and track all the grant opportunities. And I think I heard you say that Chris is going to be coordinating this in terms of risk and everything. But will he also be coordinating in in other areas like um transportation or sustainability or public works?
Yes, I I think I I didn't finish my thought, or I went in a different direction. So Chris really is our internal clearinghouse for any and all grants. He is plugged into many, many different networks. Um I know on a regular basis, he's in touch with um the staff of our congressional let our congressional delegation and our our local state delegation. And so he really is plugged in. And when he sees something that looks like it might be a match, he will make sure and send that off to the appropriate person within the organization. Another thing I I wanted to to mention is it it's not just about getting any and every grant. It's about getting grants that that we can use. And I know in the past, we have received grants and then not been able to do the work. And we've had to turn funds back. So that that's not good. We don't want to get a reputation of of just getting grants.
Doing something that's a low priority, just because we get the money to do it.
Right.
Instead of spending time on something that's more important.
And so I I think this is where trying to come up with some um system that brings in the key priorities of all of the various planning documents and and making sure that we're working on collectively on the highest priorities versus what's the easiest thing to do. I don't have that figured out yet.
Well, well, what have you been doing?
I'm feeling um unfamiliar with the rationale for for spending a lot of time on the MWRA.
Okay.
Issue specifically. Um I noted it in your presentation, you mentioned that it is time consuming and I and it's just relatively unfamiliar. Um I can recall making a comment at a previous public hearing about the fact that if thi- this feels like one of those ones where we could be fairly far down the track before we have an idea of exactly why we're we're pursuing it. So maybe that would be an interesting one to bring forward as, you know, for an initial look.
So if if I could just take two minutes.
Sure.
On that, um in the not-too-distant past, we became aware that MWRA was interested in taking on more membership and that they would waive their membership fees, their entrance fees, which were are millions and millions of dollars to to be able to be a a member community. And so at that time, we set up a committee, a task force, not not a select board committee, but we have a a resident committee. And Mary Hartman is is the select board's representative on that committee. Uh but we have some membership from Planning Board or former Planning Board, Public Works Commission, who we are keeping informed and and we're tracking that issue. And really, the the impetus here is PFAS and how much, how much money each community is going to be required to spend to to deal with that issue. And where we have MWRA um in Bedford and in Lexington, that there is a potential that it could be brought into Concord and and other communities in this area. And that uh it would be better overall. MWRA also operates wastewater, and it would be great if that was an opportunity. But that is not currently an opportunity. Uh they're not looking for additional member communities for wastewater.
You could have the pipes going both ways.
Only on your street.
But Mark, I I know um Public Works Director Alan Cathcart would be more than happy to to talk to you about that in greater detail. As you have time.
Yes. Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm disappointed that you haven't solved all of the problems yet.
I haven't.
That's our next meeting's agenda.
Answer to you on the back.
All right, we don't have to take any action on this, do we? Or do we want to endorse or adopt the goals? Is that?
Um that's, that's what the board did last year. And and I think it would make sense to do that if you feel that you're in a position to do that this evening.
Sure, okay.
Who's the re- recommend in adoption of the town manager's fiscal twenty-four goals?
Is it for just her goal or the ones also the departmental, departmental goals as well?
Well, I I think in in the past, you've just um set the goals for for the town manager. Because those are what you use in as part of the evaluation process.
Oh, good, that's okay, good.
And and are are you, we're adding that one other goal in the financial area?
Yes.
Okay.
Subject to what?
Oh, there's, Carrie agreed to add one more goal in the financial area about um.
Well, I think it's um the the cost savings.
Good, um did I hear a motion to that effect and do I second it?
You did.
Okay, good, now, or am I gonna vote for it?
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escavito.
Aye, and thank you.
Um myself, aye.
Good. Okay, so that brings us to.
Favorite motion of the evening.
Well, now, are we?
You have to go back.
To, do you want to go back to the town manager report or you worn out?
I I'm happy to go through it. Um you can also just note, uh there, there are two, two reports for this meeting for the week ending August eighteen and ending August twenty-four. Both of those reports are available on the web and in the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um Carrie, uh this Linda, I I I noticed that um we hired someone in the IT department and then proceeded to lose them two weeks later. And it was a salary issue and and the the market, what the market will bear. And I guess my question is, having just approved a comp and class, new comp and class system, um, oh, could you just say a little bit about how we accommodate for these market pressures?
Yeah, so in this, in this particular case, um it wasn't even a matter of the town making a counter offer. The the salary that was offered to the person was more than what his senior manager would be making. So it just wasn't even, there wasn't an opportunity to um to do anything about that. That certainly was disappointing, the the person was making really significant contributions um in even in the short time that they were here. That that was highly unusual. Um I know in talking to non-union employees about the new class and comp system, they, they all feel that the, all the ones that I have spoken to feel that the ranges are very competitive. Uh but thi- this was a situation where, I mean, it we weren't even, we weren't anywhere close.
Yeah, Linda, the situation you were talking about related to a network engineer worked primarily in the broadband field, which is one in where, you know, our broadband service requires direct competition for talent with very well-funded commercial organizations. One of the let's call it hazards and opportunities of running a municipal broadband operation is that you really are kind of scrapping in a pool that most municipal organizations don't have to compete directly with.
You know, that's understood. And I guess um my my question, and and I understand this was you you couldn't even counter because it was so far out there. But I I I just was wondering what what room we have in the new class and comp to deal with some of these direct competition issues.
So I I think just to build on what Mark mentioned, it's particularly difficult for us to compete with the private sector. And and we do have certain segments of of the town organization that we're competing directly with the private sector. We also are bound by the mass pay equity law, which um, you know, we can't, we can't take market. That can't be the sole driving reason why we set salaries. So we have to, we have to have a uh the classification side of of the class and comp plan. We we have to make sure that we are being equitable and paying positions of equal complexity similar salaries.
So you're talking about competing for talent for the town broadband.
It's it's particularly difficult when we are directly competing with the private sector um that can offer stock options, bigger salaries. You know, we have, we have a great benefit to, we have a great retirement benefit in municipal service in the pension. But that only serves you well if you are going to make municipal service your career. If if not, having to contribute to the pension system is is about the worst investment you can make. If if it's not um i- if you're not going to stay in municipal service. And we don't, we don't have a choice. We can't ask people, would you prefer a a 401K match or a pension? We are bound by law to provide the pension benefit, whether or not that actually will turn out to be a benefit to an employee.
So these are some of the, A, you have a goal that's focused on this when you, when you discuss the compensation piece. And and B, these are also some of the topics that that I know the personnel board with the HR professionals who are serving on that is uh is also engaging with the town manager to 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 work on because it is a challenging.
Yeah.
But the, but the difference here is that in most of the other town departments, there is no competition. I mean, you know, only one, only one, we, on- only the town of Concord can build the roads in Concord.
But you're competing with other similar organizations like other municipal governments, which are also building roads as opposed to in broadband and IT, you're competing with basically the entire private sector industry that that does that. And so there's a a little bit of a mismatch of resources that's available. That's just one of the issues, but.
I I would say it's a little broader than that. In in terms of paving roads, we're competing with paving contractors that pay higher salaries. Now, you might not have a a guarantee to work the full year. You might get laid off in in the winter, probably not so much anymore because they do a lot of plowing. Uh but we see it, we see it across the board. We have uh more IT professionals in this organization than you might find in a typical municipal government. We have more electrical engineers. We had an electrical engineer here this evening. We have several on staff. There aren't a lot of communities that have electrical engineers. We have more civil engineers than you than you might find. Um so it is, it is in many areas. But I think in in broadband and the light plant, those positions are among the hardest to stay competitive.
Okay. So are we ready for a motion to adjourn? I was ready at six o'clock this this evening.
So we're put off, you you don't have a chair's report?
Or? No, I'm just, I have nothing good to say.
And we'll put off the liaise on reports.
I've got some really wonderful letters about from from people uh about the uh residential tax exemption and how it really made a, just a enormous difference in them and their ability to survive in this town. And this is totally unsolicited.
But I I think it remains something that the community is learning about.
Yes.
And we're making progress on um putting together the 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 process.
Okay. Who will adjourn?
Second.
Ms. Akram?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escavito?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
And please make a note that we adjourned at eight forty-six.
I got it. I got it.